We call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Oh Kelly, here. Mormon.
Here.
Ilzabek.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Angstrom.
Here.
Item two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Or none?
Move to approve?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
He needs to unmute himself. Or is he allowed to unmute?
Henson?
Yes.
Oh Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Ilzabek?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Item number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A presentation on the downtown tree grates, Kelly Maliter.
Okay, let's see. Wait, that, oh, I'm sorry. Right. Hi, everyone. This is super exciting. So you remember about two years ago, we came and stood here and said, we really want to put trees back downtown. And as phase one. As phase two, we said, we want to do this big tree grate project. But that will have to wait. So after almost two years, we're doing our second big downtown Boone, Main Street project. So I wanted to share that with you today. You'll also remember that when we put in the trees, a lot of the business owners said, don't put the trees back. We hate the mulch. It's a pain, it gets in our doorways, we have to clean it. So we said, how can we solve this problem by doing something else? And so the tree grates are the answer to that mulch making a mess downtown for the business owners. So that's why we decided to do phase two of this project.
Point at me.
Thank you. So in Main Street fashion, right? What we are trying to do as an organization is to build as many partnerships as we can and to create as many connections as we can. So in thinking about how we're going about doing this project, we partnered with the Torador Metal Works class at high school. And so in working with their teacher, Jim Fitzgerald, he really wanted them to be able to do like the project from start to finish, as it would be done kind of in the real world. So we asked them to design grades for us. Jim didn't give them any rails, sort of, to operate by. He just said, create this thing for downtowning. So we had seven students, most of them submitted designs. And I just wanted some of them to be represented here tonight. You can kind of see, we've gone from a transition of, you know, very kind of Boone and designs to really more of a geometric kind of shape that we settled on. But we really wanted to incorporate student design. So you can see the one that says Boone, Iowa, that track, those rings, those we incorporated into our final design. Also kind of some of the lines and the characters. A lot of their designs were just structurally, they wouldn't work as far from a fabrication point of view, also from an ADA perspective. But we didn't give them any rules. We just, these are kids that don't often have an opportunity to do the artistic design piece. And so that was really important that we incorporated that. New advancement, there you go, thank you. So the kids have been working on their designs, they've been working on importing them into the software for the CNC machines. And then a couple of weeks ago, we have thirty FFA kids come down and help us prep thirty-two spots for the tree grates. All of the tree spots are getting metal tracks that the grates just sit on. So we had to dig out like two feet in each corner and along the edge. So the wayland and Public Works can attach the tracks to the concrete before they dump the grates in. So these kids, I thought it would take them maybe an hour and a half with thirty kids. We didn't quite finish after almost three hours. So it was a lot more work. Waylon brought his loaders down, we probably took ten loads of stuff out. It was way more than what we had thought, but these kids did a great job and worked really hard for us. And so the last three Fri- or two Fridays, and then this Friday, the kids had been out at Wayne Trailer actually doing the cutting. Wayne Trailer has a much bigger facility and machine, so they were able to do the full sets of grates. You can see here, this is half of our grate that we've got. And the kids have, I think, five more, maybe, grates to do this coming Friday, but they're almost done. And then you can see, Waylon and his team have gotten several of the grates installed. This is the one on the southwest corner of Ninth and Story Street. So this is what the olive is looking like. They're gonna have some mulch in there, I think, under the grates. And they should be good to go. They're all ADA accessible and they look fantastic. So this has been a really good culmination of a lot of groups. And I should have, the students were supposed to come in present, five of them are working tonight, and two of them were absolutely petrified to get up in front and knock people. And I said, they were not gonna do that, so. So as I think, again, there was one more slide that I wanted to include and I didn't. So this is a list, just to kind of give you an idea of like, what Main Street is doing and what we are bringing, like all of the partnerships, all of the groups of people that we worked with to make this happen. So we have city council, right? We thank you for your blessing, for the funds, the hotel motel funds helped to pay for these grates. Also, Public Works and Waylon and his time and his guys, they really, we could not have done this project without them. And the parks, we're gonna get some mulch. And I think Mike's gonna take one of our extra trees, so Waylon doesn't end up with a snowball. The school, the metal horse teacher, Jim Fitzgerald, all of the students in that program, the FFA kids who did the tree hole clearing, Elaine Trailer, not only did they let us use the space to cut the grates and things and spend their time to input the kids' designs into the computers and stuff. But they also got a manufacturing four-point-oh grant from the state from I D A, that I think was fifty thousand dollars. And so without that piece, this project wouldn't have been possible, because they wouldn't have had the machinery to even do that. So it's kind of cool that there's state money that actually got wrapped up into this. Freedom Tree Care, he is the arborist that helped us with the trees and he helped us size the grates as well. All the volunteers on our design committee, we had Laura Hutchcraft and Laura Deers do a lot of the design work. They went to the school, they met with the kids, they talked about how to do design stuff. And then the Boone Hunter Club also, we kind of won that a couple of twenty-four. So the other half of the tree grates was paid for with Boone Hunter Club money. So, and Main Street organization, like, this is what we're gonna do, and this is what we're gonna keep doing. So it's a great project, if you haven't gone out to see the grates in person, you should take a look. And then next Tuesday, we're gonna do our tree grate dedication. So the students will be there, council, if you would like to come, that would be fantastic. Invite's been extended to Waylon. And we're just going to, you know, kind of give the students the credit and recognize the people who were involved. So we hope you can join us.
What time?
Three o'clock. At Eighth and Story, in the green space.
Tomorrow?
Next, no, not next Tuesday.
Next, oh, okay.
Happy to answer any questions?
Questions, comments?
They look really nice.
Do you see them?
It's taken a while, but they look good. And are they all paid for now?
Yeah. Yep.
It's great to see those other designs that they proposed, you know, it's just too bad you can't incorporate all of them.
Yes, and because we didn't quite understand how CNC, like, software works, we're like, oh, we can help you do this design, and we can design it, and then you can put it in, and no, no, that's not how it works, like. It's so, we're hopeful that maybe next year, they have this class every spring. And so that we could kind of build on this. We're talking about doing different things to incorporate some of their other designs. And then the kids next year can really just build them out, smaller pieces to kind of tack weld on there or some other something. So, yeah, we hope to continue to work with them, they had a good time working with us, too, so.
Awesome. Thank you for all your work on this, it's lovely.
You are welcome.
You said, Tuesday, three o'clock?
Eight twenty-seven.
Eighth and Story, yeah, on the twenty-seven. And I think we have a flyer coming out that has all the information, too.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, B, review approved new city logo, Courtney Sisson, Arts Advisory Board.
I've got some green packets.
For sure, yep, you can come on over and get things to pass out.
We have packets, and I also sent in the logo, but I don't know how to work this thing.
That's only for a
No, do the slideshow, you can bring that over. Yeah, yeah.
And can I hand these out?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I don't know what to do first. Yeah, so.
Thank you. Yeah, they're two different.
So I'm Courtney Sisson, the Chair of the Arts Board, the City Board, and Linda is also in there. We were gifted this logo from downtown when they had their whole rebranding. And we just wanted to present it to you, Chris. The first page is obviously the new logo that was given to us. Ben Moldrow is the graphic designer behind this, and he is giving it to the city a hundred percent for free if they want it. He's willing to tweak a few things, if you don't like All aboard, we thought Tribune You'll Stay would be great. It's art that's going up in September. He just, he just, yeah, he designed this with, the first page is all the current logos that are being used in Boone. And that's kind of what he based our painting on. First page is the business, Arnett Moldrow, and then what it says about Ben, speaking for twenty-five years. Arnett Moldrow has been in five hundred and fifty communities, one state, and five countries. I just wanted to give you a little back history on their company. And then the colors he picked out, and this goes with downtown Boon, it correlates to everything that he actually designed. He did multiple logos for downtown. And then the fonts that he gave us, and we would own, right, Polly? Yeah, so we could write anything in these fonts, he would give them all to us, write anything in them. Through whatever Canva or whatever you guys use for your designs. Next page is the downtown Boone logo that Polly has presented for that, right? Okay. And then he also gifted us some Pufferbilly logos. Yeah, so this, we just wanted to present it to you guys, so you can see what he offered the city a hundred percent for free. He chose a bridge, waterway, the bridge was supposed to represent connectivity, and we have lots of bridges in Boone County. And then obviously, the Des Moines River, and that says the county seed, it was all representing that. And, yeah, I just wanted to present it to you guys, I don't know.
And then the font that he chose also represents nature, and this is first such a community. It's based off of, that's all of us, those are fonts. So it kind of helps represent, we have with ledges and the coves and all the city parks that we have. That's part of the reason why he chose that style of buildings, and that we're an older community that is growing. Why he chose the fonts. And then the colors, the blues and the greens, the redness of nature. And then he chose the yellows and the oranges to represent like a warm, to counteract the, the, the blues and the redness. And the nature, and like with All aboard, with the red lines, that's to represent the history of the tracks and the railroad and the side of our city history.
And I think the other option doesn't have All aboard.
Right.
And we can change the verbiage for that. And then this, like Courtney said, this was gifted us to us for free. There was no cost, and it goes along with the other branding in Main Street.
He's originally from South Carolina, and he came here for forty-eight hours, did research, and then pulled it all together in a presentation. I love it, I look at websites when I go on vacations, I think it's welcoming, I would go there, that's all.
One thing we'd have to be sure of is if it could be reproduced in a black and white format, so we could put it on like the trucks and stuff.
Thank God, I've seen my, I prefer to make a colored version of these.
You could get a colored version of it, I just didn't know how that would look on a blue truck, like, do you have some blue trucks?
Primarily, all my trucks will be white. Blue, the blue dump trucks, I do get that, it'd be, we might put a white background with the color.
Yeah, McQuarter, okay, that's one, thank you for weighing in on that.
I just have a couple comments that I want to make, I'm on the Arts Advisory Group. And I guess the question I wanted to cross out is, we have this one example that we've received. Does the council want us to pursue and get several more? So we have a selection, or are they satisfied with this? My question is, I don't know if we want to bring in, we've got the bridges, I didn't know if we wanted something, if that represents Boone, or if we wanted to get something more representative of Boone, whether that would be, we've kind of got the, whether the railroad, we've got a little of that, whether we, we have a lot of trees in Boone. Our new arch, if we somehow brought that in. So I didn't know if we wanted to make it a little more personal, or if this fits.
The Triune Boone is on the last page, too, if you wanted to look at that one.
Yeah, I think that one, you're using that for the fundraising for the arch, right? That last logo?
And that's just to show that Coeysom is all the different parts of the community, how all these different colors and how everything comes together, so that put the examples, like the Story Street.
The Main Street logo.
Like the Main Street logo, the Pufferbilly thing around Story. It's just the different, different parts of the community, how it all is kind of cohesive, and it all blends together. And then the city would also kind of be a part of that representation.
And the verbiage, All aboard can be changed to State, Tribune You'll Stay, I thought that would be a
That's what you were
Yeah, sorry. To the, to the arch.
That would be cool, I've had All aboard.
I wasn't a fan of the All aboard.
I'm not either.
Yeah.
And that ties it in.
It does.
Yeah, then with
To the arch project.
Okay.
Well, this was one of our goals that we set for the year. We do have money earmarked for this, or we have money set aside.
Well, we have money set aside in case a designer was needed, but this guy came in and gave his labor free of charge, process.
I, I think it's a great option, I think that we should do our due diligence on here, just to make sure that it is what the community wants as well. I don't feel our place right now to make a decision and say, this is what we want. I think we need, we should get some community input on this, is it something that, you know, it's gonna last us forever?
Twenty years.
You know, or twenty, you know, it's
Sure, how, what, what would that look like? How would you like to get?
I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I was wondering if we could get a couple more, if we wanted to go this direction, get a couple more designs and just post those, and have people give some input.
Yeah.
You know, we don't even have to have a, an evening kind of event, we could just post with a, leave a note here and, and give us feedback on which one you prefer, and get some sort of feedback that way. But I, I'm, I'm kind of like you, we're gonna have this for twenty years, thirty years, and we, we've had the last one for a long time. So it'd be nice to get some community kind of feedback, I think.
Who would do the legwork?
I run into finding designers that are willing to even do mockups for us. I know I've reached out to several
There's no mockup spree ever.
That's what I mean, we've got money set aside.
Totally fine.
Yeah, I don't know how much money we had there, but it was a significant amount, because this is a very big decision.
So. Andre had some
Set amounts, if we're doing it, would be amazing.
Hey, one second.
I'm not sure how much it was.
Yeah, sure. We had one rough quote that was, I think, three hundred dollars. But if, if it's more than that, then, then we can talk about, so it, okay. So I think you have three designer, potential designers that reached out to you.
Into three designers.
So if you could ask them for an RFP, so a quote on designing three potential logos.
Three.
From each of the three, yeah, and see what their price would be. Then if they produce a logo, yeah, see what their price would be. And talk, talk to us about, well, me about it, and I can talk with Andre, and we can talk about how much those have come in at. See which one we would wanna fund for the actual production of the logo. So if they're completely, if they're all completely outrageous, then back to the drawing board, but if you get a couple that are in the range of several hundred dollars that we were thinking about, that through the council would fund that, for them to produce. And so you have the contact information. Got them, say, how much would it cost to produce three logos?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
As part of the branding services, it does benefit to the three, and the services are good, three, they're through Main Street, Iowa. His branding package would have
Right, like, no, dollars, right, you'll stay there.
For all the services that he provides.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I mean, I like this, I don't know if there's any way to ask him, you know, could he just change the All aboard to Triune? We can see what that looks like. I mean
And he said he would make alterations.
We have to file, so we would make all Polly owns the font now.
Yeah.
All of the letters.
So I just didn't know if we could do anything on our backend to try to tweak it a little, so we're staying.
I think over here, we're just concerned about not having enough options at the table. I think, how do you feel over here?
You, I like this a lot, and when I was at the meeting where he presented it, he talked about all of the bridges in this around here, which, way more bridges than I
And I would be very, I would even be specific that that's the Kate Shelley High Bridge.
I was gonna say, that's what I, that was when I thought
Go with that, like, say that's
It is, but it's not, it was what he was very
Yeah, and you know what, I, I looked at this, both of these, and I like both of them. And I initially liked the first one without the All aboard, but I kind of like the second one a lot, too.
Which we can have different varieties for different things, like a letterhead versus a truck.
That's true.
So this is cohesive with downtown.
Yeah.
Stylist
Personally, I, I don't have a problem making a decision if everybody likes this logo. I mean, it's a double edged sword, getting public input on something like this, because it can be very, very divided. And if you don't ultimately choose the one that was the public's preferred logo.
Lot of backlash.
Then
My last question, does, does the river and the hills and the bridge make you think city or not city?
Mm-hmm.
Makes me think outdoor activities, to think Boone has a lot of.
Yeah, and that's something we're really trying to lean into. One of the other things, too, is even if we adopt a logo, there's gonna be a, could be a reskinning of the website and social media and everything like that. We will have to pay for that.
Yep.
And branding on all of our clothing and items and things of that nature along the way, but.
I just prefer to put some time into it and check what other options we can see. We could certainly end on this one, but I, maybe, we're gonna, this is a big decision to represent the city.
Can I, okay, can I suggest?
Yeah, this and you got both.
We see what, let's see what quotes that these three designers have for us.
Okay.
Consider them, in case if it's way out of the ballpark, then we'll scrap it, okay? Because I think there's a consensus that this is really good logos.
It is, yeah.
But not spending twenty thousand dollars on something when we have something really good. I would also suggest that we, as elected representatives, decide.
Sure.
I mean, you can get, you know, input from folks and stuff ahead of time, but having a very public thing, I think it would muddy the waters, make things more complicated, you know?
And having a couple, yeah, that people can see.
Yeah.
So we've put some time and effort into
Change, and I will say, All aboard at Tribune You'll Stay, I'm good with that.
I agree.
I just don't like the All aboard.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, though, I don't want to vote on that today.
Right, so
And we can bring that
No, they can bring that, yeah.
That'd be awesome.
But I just told Courtney, I appreciate their, their work on
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
I know it's a tough thing to do. You're branding the city, so.
We have a decision to make, you all have a decision to make here. Would you like to either, A, ask them to get quotes from these designers and see what they have? Or B, ask them to go make the, the revision on the All aboard and see what it looks like?
I'd be curious what the quotes are, I mean, are they thousand bucks, are they twenty thousand each? Then, like you said, we can scrap it if they're twenty thousand each, but I'd say both.
Have a choice, yeah.
So, okay, so you want to make that motion, you want to
Yeah, I'll make a motion to change the, this design here to say Triune on it. Whether it's, whether it says Tribune You'll Stay, or try, I said, play with it, I said
Okay, maybe do both and see how it looks?
Yeah, do what, see what it looks like, whatever you guys think looks best. And then reach out to some designers and see what quotes would be to get some different, get some options, so.
I'll second it.
Let's see if we can get Cory in here before I call the roll. Any other discussion on, on that before I do take the roll? So the motion is to make the subtle revisions on what you have already, so we can see what that looks like. Addition, requests, quotes from the three individuals that you have, and bring
I'd probably go elsewhere, I wasn't happy with what I looked into, so different brandings. I've got some
Couple of quotes, let's see what the price point would be. If it's too spicy, then We've got something in our bag.
No, okay.
Then it looks like it's close. I, I think, right, council?
Yeah. Well, that's, thanks.
Hang on, I don't really
Cory, buddy.
Cory, can you say something?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Perfect, yep, we got you.
Yeah, I actually like the All aboard. Doesn't sound like anybody else does. But I'm okay with
Okay.
With this, this mockup. But it sounds like I'm on the tail end of that decision.
Yeah, I think, overall, the consent, well, the consensus majority is kind of leaning towards trying to see if there are other options. But, yeah, overall, it seems like everybody likes the logo as it is, but it's not sure pulling the trigger.
And I'm good, I'm good with that also, to, you know.
So that's the motion on the table right now, is to make those subtle revisions on the wording of the All aboard logo. And then also get quotes from a couple of designers to see what price range they look at, that they're looking like for three additional mockups.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy with that.
So, and we have a motion second, any other discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Ilzabek?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much, and if you need other clarification on, as things go along, keep in touch, I'll help you out.
Thank you, guys, for your work.
Okay. The other thing, too, is that this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, it's not even fiscal year twenty twenty-six yet.
Yeah, that's right.
We're ahead of the game, for no, okay. The public hearing for the consideration of sale of property located seven twenty-one Lynn Street, Boone, Iowa. Are there any writ comments? Are there any public comments? Signal, this public hearing is closed.
Did you do see, Mayor?
Oh, I'll come back to this, since I already did that, yeah. Okay, so we have one review and accept offer on the sale of property located seven twenty-one Lynn Street, Boone, Iowa.
Are there Are we gonna, are we gonna wait, accept those bids tonight?
Yeah.
Says review, accept.
Yep, if you accept it, then we will have the resolution for the quitclaim deed on the June second.
I'd like to see a house built there.
Yeah, I, I Yeah, so the, the selective bid was the, the ten thousand dollar.
That's the one I recommended.
Yeah, that's with the house, right?
House.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So motion to accept the ten thousand dollar bid with the house.
And, and then, are you okay with the twenty-five percent?
Yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion to accept the ten thousand dollar bid with a twenty-five percent rebate once the house is complete.
Perfect. I'll second that, please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Ilzabek?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Oh Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, coming back to Okay, uh, coming back to C here, uh, public hearing for the consideration of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amendments. Are there any written comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Uh, we have resolution thirty three seventy eight adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the world.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hey, item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. You can. Yeah, yeah. Just uh, when you come up, state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Bert Turner. I dress as three one five Manona Street. And uh, I take a minute to establish a couple of qualifications. My wife is an agronomy major, graduated by Iowa State University and a certified crop advisor. And myself, uh, currently work as an engineer, so I'm familiar with wording of official language and sort. I also have, was essentially an associate of biosciences degree in agriculture. So I know a few things about trees and plants. Additionally, and uh, from two thousand one to two thousand eight, I operated a lawn and tree service. Where I mowed lawns and um, had a private or have a public pesticide applicator's license. And performed tree care operations, so therefore very familiar with trees, plants and lawns and how they how they all relate. So. This came as a bit of a shock and and frankly, an insult to myself, given my farm uh, occupation as a lawn tree character writer. Uh, when it's around seven to seven fifteen Saturday evening, uh, we were suddenly invaded by a man on a lawnmower. By the name Kirk. Now, when I approached him about why he was on my property, the film he said that we were in violation of, I ended up looking up chapter one fifty one of the city code. To which I had no prior knowledge. And uh, when I asked him to leave, he said I was interfering with official acts, to which I responded, there is no official act if I do not have notice. So, um, looking around my yard, I had couple of areas with some tall weeds. Now that is due to, uh, last weekend, I had mowed the backyard. Beginning my lawnmower out for this winter slumber. Um, the front yard was no less than, or no more than eight to ten inches tall. And it's mostly consists of weeds, due to the fact that uh, when we bought our house in twenty eighteen, we selected a house with a very large selection of large shade trees, both on the city right away and on our property. Uh, two of which are lindens, which are telepathic, meaning they restrict plant growth underneath their canopies. Now. Additionally, the shade does not allow for proper grass growth. Uh, and uh coupled with my wife's uh, love for plants and very thorough knowledge thereof. She and I chose to not force grass to grow underneath these trees. Therefore, it's just a, uh, it's a bunch of weeds that we mow to keep short. And have been doing since we moved here seven years ago. So I have whole list, I'm just going a little bit off the cuff due to some recent developments. I contacted uh, the gentleman with the city that Kirk gave me the name of, uh, Ron Kidd. Uh, this afternoon and discussed it with him. And as to why our lawn was put on the list. Uh, he sent me a picture of a nineteen inch tall native Iowa plant called, um accurate the name, I forgot my head exactly, but it's a native Iowa plant that is a viennial. And is not in any way nuisance list. It is not on the nuisance list listed in the ordinance. But my main concern with this ordinance is the disambiguous wording of section five. Where it seems the uh, person in charge of enforcing this ordinance has taken upon themselves to determine that they do not need to provide notice before mowing someone's yard. And the fact that he's chosen to do this on a weekend when people are out trying to enjoy their yard.
May I pause you just for a moment? Okay, so uh, just to clarify on the ordinance, um, there is the one exception in there for grass that's longer than twelve inches.
Yes.
Yeah, that is, that's the one exception.
I would argue.
That that notice is given in all cases except for twelve inch or higher grass. So that that is, that's clear.
I I would argue that that's a little bit disambiguous because the, I'll read it here, in case of a substantial failure, except in cases of grasses.
Except in cases of grasses.
Growing over twelve inches tall, which will be cut immediately. Tama by the owner or person in possession or control of any land to comply with any order of destruction pursuant to provisions of this fact, so on supporting.
So that's the accepted.
Right, so that that's saying in other circumstances, that various patches and things like that, the five day notice would be provided. Except for when the situation is grass over twelve inches, there is no additional notice given other than the publication that's done every April. That's an exclusion from that five day notice.
And on the timing, on the timing where it's cut, that isn't up to the city at all. Uh, there's a contractor list that a list of properties is given to, so we don't have control over that portion of it.
And I read the contract. It's available online on the website. It does say that the contractor shall mow all the lawns within seventy two hours.
Sure.
Kirk informed me that he was given the list on Friday afternoon. Therefore, he has till Sunday afternoon to get it done.
Monday.
Right, so our our agreement with them is we give them the list of properties. And then the expectation from the city on the contractor's part is to get those done within seventy two hours of providing that list, so. It doesn't mean he's gonna wait seventy two hours. It means from the city's perspective, we're hiring you to get these things done within seventy two hours that we've given you the list, given him the list.
Meaning, if it is given on Friday afternoon, that means he has to do it Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Anytime in that time period.
But that's beside the point. Not giving proper notice to run into somebody's yard unannounced. And then charge them fifty dollar fine plus forty five dollar mowing cost, which I just found out today. What that actually is. Without giving someone an opportunity to remedy it themselves is frankly, overreach by the city.
Yeah, I sympathize with you on that point. Um, you know, I had proposed previously that we just have a system whereby when you get put on the list, put a note on the door. And you're already on the list. It'll get mowed within seventy two hours, but if you see the note, you happen to see the note and mow it before then, then you're taken care of. I'd actually like you to consider that again.
Yeah, I would like that to be considered too.
But on the contrary, I don't, you know, as an owner of a lawn and landscape and tree business, what would your customers have said if your lawn looked like that? Why would you wait till it would be twelve to fifteen inches long to mow it? As I said, we're, uh my wife and herself have chosen to allow native plants chance to grow in our yard. Because we have no we don't have a proper place for grass to grow. The places that we do have grass growing in our backyard and one small section in our front yard that gets a little bit of sun. Those places are always maintained less than twelve inches. In fact, they don't grow over twelve inches.
So you're you're saying that your front yard area, your intention is to never mow it because you're letting the native plants grow?
No. We keep it at a reasonable height. But we're not gonna maintain a monoculture. But.
You could cut it to ten inches.
So anyhow, uh, the the height restriction is twelve inches.
The point is, sorry. The main point I came here for is the fact that it the citizens who are put on this list need to be provided a chance to take care of this themselves before they're charged a fifty dollar fine and forty five, which apparently goes up to two hundred dollars to find us in charge.
So I I.
I think we can discuss that.
Back on the table, simply a sticky note prefilled with a blank that says, at this time, at this address, your property was found in violation of et cetera and has been put on a list to be mowed within seventy two hours. That doesn't obligate anyone to do anything. It's just simply a notice.
Well, and I did put out a call on this weekend. I did put out a uh, comment on Facebook community page. And there are a lot of people who agree with me that notice is required. And there are a lot of people who agree that there's not required.
Well, the code is being followed. Clearly, the clearly the code is being followed. The the question really I answer whether we can do some more to allow people the opportunity to be notified ahead of time in addition to the code, and that's what I'm suggesting.
That's where I'm coming in is. And I think that's where you're.
Yeah, this would be more just a policy. This would be our policy to put a note on the door.
I I think it, I think it should be put into code, like discussed later.
I I don't have a problem with what the mayor said about Ron putting a notice on the tape a notice on the door. He stops and takes a picture.
Exactly.
Talking about thirty seconds to walk up, tape it on the door. The only problem with that is if the owner says, I never got it.
That's
but if he takes a picture of it.
Well, true.
That it's on the door, then they have seventy two hours if they don't react.
Then you know. Well, it's it's simply a courtesy. That's all it is.
I'm okay with that as well.
I don't, I don't have a problem at all with Ron doing that. I it's it's a thirty second task.
Yeah. Is there a motion on that?
Turning on the subject of amending the ordinance. Uh, it does say director of public safety, it may enter on the land and cause the weeds to be destroyed. But it did say but notice shall be, and the actual destruction shall not commence until after five days notice.
Right.
That's that's the exception I pointed out as and I had this on my Facebook post.
Right, but the exception applies from earlier on. So I'm trying to help you here.
Right.
Hang on a second. Can you hang on a second?
Yeah.
Trying to help you here. I would like a motion to be, put that on the agenda for our next meeting to be approved. For putting notes.
Just to you know?
The note, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Please call the world.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
No.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
No.
Ho ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay, any final thoughts?
I just wanted to note that I should have been providing notice because the proof that Ron sent me is not grass. And it is not a nuisance plant on the list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Uh, five reports of standing committees, A, policy administration Williamson.
Your honor.
B, public safety, Elizabeth.
Very for your honor.
C, utility, Angstrom.
Very for.
D, economic development, Mormon.
Um, we've been pretty quiet, so uh, we haven't had any BIF requests or any downtown incentive requests, so if you know of somebody read the word.
Next fiscal year is coming up, so.
Uh.
Next fiscal year is coming up.
Yeah. We uh could use some programs, so.
Excellent.
If you have know anybody, let them know. That's all I have here.
Uh, departmental reports, A, building construction, Dave's not with us this evening, uh, B, city attorney, Ray. Uh, C, director of public fourth, Wayland. Uh, D, library, Jamie.
Yes, just a reminder that the library summer reading program, our carnival is coming up on June second from four to seven. So if you want to stop before the council meeting, we'd love to see you.
Thank you. E, park director, Mike.
Uh, the only thing, I just wanted to let you know that the pool heater has been installed. And we are cutting edge. I'll bring pictures next time.
Is it a big hot tub now? Thank you.
Uh, F, recreation director, Nate.
Thank you, your honor, uh, council members. Uh, just wanted to update you on a few things. Uh, we in June will be starting a three and four year old blast ball. Which is quite a blast to uh, take part in and watch. It's pretty hilarious and adorable. Uh, so that's coming up. We also have a cardio dance class that'll be happening over in the auditorium. Uh, both these things will be Saturdays, um taking place here on Saturday mornings. Um the next thing I wanted to talk about is I did send a rough draft of a twenty eight E agreement, kind of amalgamation of twenty eight E agreements that exist, kind of out there in the world, Boot County and Polk County are kind of where we pulled from. Just kind of to start the process with the school. The school's had it for a while and I will update you when I hear anything back. Uh, and the last thing is I, there's a city of Boone recreation Facebook page that these things will be shared on, um, flyers and photos and things like that. So I'll be able to look out for that as we advertise some of the stuff and hopefully get it shared around. So, any questions for me?
What is blast ball?
But you know what? I probably shouldn't actually. So think of T-ball, but even kind of more similar to being four year olds. So it's a teed up ball, very soft, there's a safety line. We use some sort of rubber usually that they stand behind even, because they're they're pretty little, uh, boys and girls and um everybody bats, they hit the ball, they run to first base generally. You'd like to give coaches kind of a little bit of uh, freedom on on that. Do we do we move to adding a second base, uh third base and coming home and and things like that? But uh, generally getting them kind of comfortable with the bat in their hand, hitting a ball, getting to first base. Um, the blast ball was invented with a base made of noise. Um, and it's kind of, that company who produced those went defunct. I tried to tech borrow and steal from my friends in Ankeny that have them and they said they are worth gold prices right now, so no, gonna know on that, but we'll have some bases down. Uh, everyone bats, um, and it's it's a really fun time for for the little ones. Just, it's a very. For for the little ones, just it's a very social program as well. It's not. We're not training people for Jim's Dodgers uh, in the major leagues or. That is fully to introduce the store and have a very social activity.
That's a family resource centers uh, in space, so we do wanna thank them for letting us do that.
Yes, uh, definitely thanks to.
I've seen it.
Activity and uh, cardio dance is just right next door, so.
Go live date on the recreation Facebook page?
Go live, so it's it exists right now. Um, I didn't, I wanted to talk to you about this before I put the official stuff out, but I have registration forms and all the rules and things like that. Uh, adding in.
Yeah, we want to make sure people have access to.
Yeah, feel free to tag me on it or anything, so.
That is the plan.
Thanks.
Tag us so we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
D, engineer, Perry.
Yes, just one thing, your honor. Uh, crack ceiling on Eighth Street and Eleventh Street will start on May twenty eighth, so we from this Wednesday. Um, they're not gonna be shutting the entire streets down. They'll have one lane open. And uh, traffic can actually follow behind, but it doesn't need to be, so and they think only one day.
Public safety, uh, chief Weevil.
Door recorder, your honor.
Thank you. Did administrator, Andrea.
Just a few things. Um, there's a send off ceremony on Wednesday, May twenty eight at three P M at the Boone Speedway. If you are wanting to go, uh, we do need a R S V P, so um, can you let Kim know if you don't know already?
We still have hands now.
That'd be great.
I can go.
And um, mayor.
It's May twenty eighth.
Yep, Wednesday, May twenty eighth at three P M.
Race track?
We have a public safety meeting this month?
Yes.
I can probably attend that then.
At three?
Yep. They got Lisa very cold.
At the Boone Speedway?
Yep. I can send out a reminder.
Yeah, do that.
And then the other thing I have, uh, everybody got the reminder or the notice that um, the. Uh, Daisy groundbreaking ceremony has been moved to um, Cobblestone at eleven.
Indoors.
Indoors, yes. And then our annual Iowa League of Cities Conference is September seventeenth through the nineteenth. Uh, registration opens on June sixteenth. Um, so with that, um, for those that uh, have not belonged or have not gone, um. We do have to register before we can put our hotel reservations in and those hotel reservations go very quick. Uh, the block does, so if you can let uh, me or Kim know prior to June fifteenth. Um, that you wanna go, we can get you registered the morning of the sixteenth.
What's the city?
Uh, Des Moines, yep.
So.
Drive down.
Yeah.
I'll go too. You're putting names down.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Me, on him.
Okay.
In case, I don't know.
And the date?
All right, item seven, consent agenda.
September seventeen through the nineteenth, okay.
All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Move to approve.
Please call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho ho Kelly? Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Anson?
Yes.
The ordinance is, we have nine. Uh, nine mirrors comments. I was going to comment something, but I forgot what it was, so. Uh, ten council members' comments.
I just have one thing, um, should have brought it up with utility. I'm gonna make him uh, change to utility to five o'clock on the second. Second Monday of the month instead of four thirty. Uh, that way we can just be here and then go right into council, so. If you guys are okay with that, or if you have any issues, please let me know, so.
Would be on the second Monday?
First Monday, sorry. First Monday.
First Monday or third Monday?
Whenever it is.
Third Monday, sorry. Yeah. On one of the Monday, so.
Um, I also should have mentioned it during public safety, but uh, the road blocked by the. T-ball stuff looks really good, the baseball stuff, so thank you for that.
I served up some nice pancakes.
Yes, a good pancake breakfast, yeah, it's firehouse. Very good. Other comments? Seeing none, uh, we will move to item eleven, which is a closed session pursuant to Iowa code. Twenty one point five one I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment. Hiring performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent de-lit and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation. And that individual has requested a closed session. So move. Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho ho Kelly?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Anson?
Yes.
Angstrom?